You guys know what happened in March, April, May, and June, right? We our kids did not get educated. Our kids didn't get their services. They didn't get academic instruction from teachers. Teachers didn't gonna get on and teach our kids. Parents were given the logs and the lists and the links and the websites to teach their own children. They they didn't receive their IEPs, kids didn't receive their IEPs, which just from that period of time, that is causing districts now to owe those kids to make up those services and make up that academic instruction. But parents, if you don't know how, it's called compensatory education and compensatory services. But if you don't know how to ask for that, then you're not going to get it because they're not going to just give it to you. They're not going to do that. You have to know the legal terms and the legal progress process to request compensatory education. You have to know your rights in order to call an IEP meeting and present this to your district in with the right terminology and in the right manner in order for you to win that for them to make up your services, to agree to fund it and to make it up. So that's why I'm offering my monthly membership for parents at a super low cost because this is what I'm teaching parents. I'm teaching you, how do you ask for compensatory education? How do you prepare for your IEP meeting? How do you write your parent agenda so that you can write all your concerns, the things that didn't work before with distance learning and what you're requesting for the new school year so your child can learn? So that you don't have to be the teacher, the speech pathologist, the one-on-one aide, and the behavioralist? Because if you don't learn those things, it's going to look just like it did in March, April, May, and June. Because this is the deal, you guys. The school district is a bureaucratic institution, and that's what they are. And bureaucratic institutions, their purpose is to maintain power and control over the stakeholders. So the administrators at the top, the superintendents, those administrators, they hold the power over the teachers. The teachers hold the power over the students. And that's the pyramid of the hierarchy of an institutional bureaucracy. And we're not even in that pyramid, you guys. We're not a part of the bureaucracy. We are outsiders. So but conversely, IDEA, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act says that we are equal IEP team participants. Parents have equal rights sitting to everyone sitting around your IEP table. You are equal to your principal. You are equal to your district representative. You are equal to the teacher, the speech pathologist, the psychologist, whoever it may be. You have equal rights and even more so than them because parents have the power to put a complete halt to the whole thing. Because you can say, I disagree with this offer of free and appropriate public education, and I am not going to agree to move forward, and I'm not going to sign my IEP. No one else sitting around that table has that power, but you do. So when you guys go to a meeting and and they size you up is what I call it, size you up, which means that they know after fifteen, twenty minutes, half hour, very shortly after, they know whether you are a parent who is educated and knowledgeable regarding your parent rights and IDEA and even, you know, 504 regulations as well, if your child is on a 504. They will know and they will treat you accordingly if you don't know. And that's the structure of the institutional bureaucracy of the school district. They're there to to it's about the funding and it's about short-term profits. And if they don't have to serve your child to the maximum extent appropriate, they are not going to. You have to enforce IDEA. We as parents have to enforce the law, which is really sad because IDEA is one of the only laws on the books where the citizens have to enforce the law instead of the the institution and the people who are supposed to be implementing IDEA. That's the way it is. That's the way it's always been since the early seventies when it was signed into law by President Ford, and it's still that way today. And it's because they've never been fully funded. It's about the money. So parents, if you don't learn these things, you're going to continue in the first quarter to not have an education. And like I talked about, it's going to go for a whole school year where your child will not have been received an education because we're going to still be in distance learning. So that's the breaking news. I don't know if you're happy or not happy about that, but I'm glad that I could have given give this to you guys because this is your opportunity to this summer, to take this time this summer to educate yourself and to learn your rights and to prepare for your next IEP meeting. So you can go in there and say, I'm requesting compensatory education. Here's my parent agenda. I know what to ask for. I know how to ask for it, and I know what my rights are. And this is what my child needs for their virtual distance learning plan. This is what they need and this in their distance learning plan. This is what my child needs to learn in in terms of accessing the curriculum virtually with technology. If you guys need parent training and technology, then we should be asking for parent training for technology so you can help your child access the curriculum. If if your child needs training in technology because they don't know how to use it, then we need training for our kids. Teachers, they're going to continue to train teachers. A lot of teachers still don't know how. I had lots of virtual meetings the last two weeks of school, and the teachers didn't know how to turn their speakers on and didn't know, you know, you they they were like having echoes in the background and didn't know how to use Zoom. So I mean, these are basic technology trainings that they should have already known, and they still weren't there. So you know, if we're going to access curriculum through technology, they need to know how to use technology. So this is where we're at. And this is what we need to prepare for this summer in terms of what's coming up. Does someone have a question?
Yes. Under IDEA, is there somewhere in the law there that the schools are supposed to train us? Because I know I've asked in the past, and they tell me, we don't have to train you.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Parent training is in IDEA. It's 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 a related service in IDEA.
Yes, it certainly is. If you go to thirty-four CFR three hundred dot thirty-four, you'll find parent training in there.
Just ask Peter. He's got the regulations.
Three hundred dot thirty, three hundred dot thirty-four is a pretty important rub because it defines what related services are, and they're all in there.
Yep.
And some of them are kind of surprising.
Yeah, here in San Diego, they tell you that they don't have to train you.
It doesn't matter what they say. If you're going to go by what they tell you, whatever, they'll say any kind of shit. It doesn't matter. What counts is what the law is. I mean, it's like going down the street and saying, oh, but the three-card money man told me this. Oh, the guy on the street corner selling the selling phones told me that. It doesn't mean anything. It doesn't matter what they tell you. You have to look at the law.
They lie.
And here is a and here is a good question. It'll take you far and requires absolutely no intelligence or understanding of anything at all. What statute or regulation says that? Maybe there is one or maybe there isn't. What do you have to know to ask them that question? You don't have to know anything. They have to know something, and you get a chance for them to educate you. They won't have an answer, or maybe they will have an answer, and it's horseshit. So, okay, so you look it up, and you learn something. But just because they said something doesn't mean anything.
That's right. So ask them for the proof. You ask them for the proof. You ask them, can you show me where it says that San Diego Unified School District is not obligated to provide parent training? Show me, show them, show me in writing. And once you do that, they back off because they can't show you in writing because it's not.
Or they'll say, this is our policy. At which point you say, well, there's two things to say. First of all, I got a policy that I took, I look here and there, and then I roll a stop sign when I turn right at this intersection. But if a cop sees me, wants to talk to me about it, he's not going to be interested in my policy. He's going to want to know about the about the vehicle code. And it's the same way with them. I don't care about your policy. What does the statute and the regulations say? That's one thing. And then the other thing is they'll say something as a policy, and there's no such thing. Yeah, at which point you ask them, could you show me the board policy or the administrative regulation that says that?
Yes.
And they don't have any. Oh, well, that's just what we do.
Yeah, it comes down to, that's our culture, and that's what we do here, which is meaningless.
It's arbitrary and capricious.
Yep. Yep. But that's how you get, if you put it in writing, I am requesting. I was told at my last IEP that this or this or this. I am requesting the board policy for that. And if they give it to you, then that you have the, that's a compliance complaint because it's a violation of IDEA, that that school district has that quote-quote policy.
Well, I'll show you something that's not really on point, right? Ed Code, and I know this one, and you might, you can guess why. Ed Code four four eight oh seven dot five says that they cannot take kids recess away unless the board has adopted reasonable rules and regulations permitting them when they're allowed to take a kid's recess. So you know, and so you'll ask for the policy. Over Corona Norco, I asked them for the policy, and they said, well, the policy is that the teacher can do it whenever they think that it's a good idea. That is not a reasonable rule or a regulation. So they don't have any kind of a legal rule or regulation on when they can take away recess in Corona Norco. So that's just an example of something. You'll ask for a board policy or administrative regulation, and then just because they said this is the answer to your question, doesn't mean that it is.
Barbara's in San Diego, and I just met her recently. And did you ever, have you ever had any cases in San Diego, Peter?
No, I really haven't. I mean, I've talked to people there once in a while, but I haven't really. Other people work down there, and I don't think San Diego's all that bad as school district.
Oh, you haven't. Barbara says she's having a pretty hard time.
Oh, no. Oh, no.
Well, we could always talk about it and stuff and see what's what. But of course, you know, maybe, you know, I don't know. Even if they're bad, you know, maybe there's worse. Happy Strano.
Yeah.
There's Corona Norco, this Chino.
Yeah. Yep.
I'll see you in San Diego, and I'll raise your chino.
Oh, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna forward you guys a lot of San Diego people because nobody's using, we're not using too many people from here anymore. I know my attorney is from Reno.
Yeah, she has an attorney from Reno, if you can believe that.
I can't believe that.
Yeah, yeah. So so parents, you know, I just, I just really can't stress enough that if you don't know how to make sure your child's going to get a distance learning plan that's going to meet their needs and they're really going to learn, then you're going to be back in the same situation of getting nothing. I mean, they're just, they're doing nothing. And you know, who knows what it's going to look like if they're going to, you know, have things roll out a little better next school year? Hopefully, they are because we've got lots of compliance complaints coming down the pike the last three months. So you know, if if they don't, if they don't do it, you know, properly, or at least try, they didn't even try. And the reason they didn't try is because they banked on the fact that Secretary DeVos was going to waive it. They thought she was going to waive IDEA, and then they wouldn't have been helped all obligated to implement IDEA or the IEP or the services. And that's what they were banking on. And when she didn't do it, now they're in a very bad position, and they're going to have to make up a lot of services and a lot of academic instruction and educational benefit where children lost skills over ten weeks of not receiving an education. But like I said, if you don't know, I mean, I still have lots of parents come in. What's comp ed? What does that mean? How do I get it? So you know, if you'll, you're never going to get it unless you learn what it is and how to ask for it, how to prepare for your meeting, and then and then get it. And then make sure, not only that, to make up for last year, but to prepare for this year to make sure that your kid's going to be educated. I mean, there's lots of kids that are just sitting, doing nothing all day long, escalating in behaviors. Their whole life has been disrupted. They don't have their schedule anymore. They don't have schooling. They don't have teachers. They don't have friends. Parents are working, and it's a horrible situation. And I'm sure I'm speaking to the choir because you're, that's what you guys are living. But you, it's going to be up to you to change it because it's going to be the same thing if you don't, if you don't change it. So I see, I see Liz here. Liz, would you mind just popping on for a second and saying something? Liz is in the member of the parent brigade, and she joined at the the second level superhero level where she actually gets a one-on-one consultation with me as well as just the regular level. And Liz, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Do you want to share with parents what your experience has been so far in the parent membership?
Oh, in the parent, well, in the parent membership, it's just given me the confidence to to ask for what I need to. I've been asking for, I asked for compensatory services for speech and OT. I've asked for IEEs. I've asked for a stronger distance learning plan because it was horrific, the one that I did receive. And it's and and what I've gotten from Valerie is I've gotten a one-on-one where we talk on the phone and we discuss what I, what we look at my IEP. We discuss what I need, what services I need. We look at, we look at, we wrote a parent agenda for the last IEP that that was held. So I was able to go in and ask for everything I wanted and have it documented and placed on my IEP so to make sure that when we do start it, now that that we are going to only have distance learning when we do start.
Yes.
They already are notified that I was not happy with what I had, and they need to give me what I'm asking for. Otherwise, I will, we will file a compliance complaint, and that's where I can go to Valerie and ask her how to do it because I have no clue how to do that. So I'm now becoming an empowered parent and confident that I'm going to be getting what I need to be getting during this crazy time.
Yes, yes. Thanks, Liz. Thanks for for that because, and that's the whole reason why I created this membership, parents, because this way I can help more parents, as many parents as possible, to have the same experience that Liz is is having. And I can do it virtually because it's easy to do. I can meet you online on Zoom. You can send me your documents, your assessments, your IEPs. I can help you write parent agendas, and I can teach you all the things that Liz just talked about and and have you be successful. And no other advocate works for these low of a prices, you guys. My typical consultation fee is $250 an hour, and and the monthly fee to join is $25 a month for Level One. And that's not the one-on-one consultation with me, but it's live Zoom calls twice a month. I you go to my membership page where I have all the emails, the logs, the charts, how to document your things. I still teach you the same things. The only thing different, if you join at Level Two, which is the superhero level, you get a half hour a month, one-on-one with me, where I actually can write, help you write your parent agenda and do one-on-one consultation. So there's two levels. And the monthly is 25, and the superhero is 100. And you have access to an advocate that's going to teach you these things that are going to give you what you need for your child to learn next year. And no advocate works for for that low of a price. But I want to do it because I want to help parents right now because I am really concerned that if we don't learn how to advocate parents and we don't say, no, we are not going to let you dismantle IDEA. We are not going to let you push our kids aside and 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 disempower us as parents for with IDEA because that's what they're doing. That is exactly what they're doing. And the districts across the nation are still lobbying with at Congress, you guys, to waive IDEA. They're still lobbying. They're they're there all the time telling Nancy, you got to waive it. You got to waive it. We can't do it in this virtual model. And and you know, it's still at risk. She could still waive it at any time. She could make that decision. She has the power to. So if we don't stand up as parents and implement our rights now and say, no, you're not going to do that. You are going to serve my child under the law, what's been there since the early seventies that we fought for all these years. We fought for inclusion. We fought for equal rights for our kids. We fought for our kids to go to school. Before the early seventies, you guys, our kids wouldn't even be in school. They wouldn't be allowed to go to school because kids with disabilities didn't attend school. So you know, so it's been forty-five years, and here we are today. I think it's where they're still discriminated against horribly. Our kids are still discriminated against every day. They're still bullied. They're still segregated. There's, there's lots of things that go on that are wrong in terms of civil rights and civil justice. But we've come a long way since the seventies. So you know, there's positives and there's negatives. But you know, I'm an inclusion advocate. I've always been an inclusion advocate. Least restrictive environment means that your child shouldn't just be stuck in a special ed class, and that's what they tell you, and that's your only option. No, you have the option to place your child in general ed. Now, is that the most appropriate where your child's going to learn the best? I don't know. Some kids do, and some kids need a smaller environment, smaller classroom with a special ed teacher. They don't give you the option. And 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 the law says your child is in general ed first. And then if your child can't make educational progress in general ed after they've given you everything available under the law in terms of support services, which are, could be an aid, could be speech, OT, ABA, whatever it may be, after they've built the IEP so that everything available is given to your child, and then they're still not successful in general ed, then they can say, you know, I think, Mom, that we should look at a special ed class. What do you think? We tried, and we've done everything under the law, and they're still not learning. Let's look at a smaller-sized classroom. That's the way it's supposed to go. It never goes that way, guys, ever. They you go, they say, here's where we're going to put your child. Here's the services we're going to give you. Take it or leave it. Now sign your IEP. And that's what they do. And that is not, that's violating your parent rights. And that's, there's a continuum of placement options available. But most parents don't even know that. A lot of parents come to me and go, I just realized my child's in a severely handicapped class, and I never knew it. I thought they were still learning and still going to be able to graduate. But I just found out they're on a certificate track, and they were taken off the diploma track. So you know, there's.
Well, and Valerie, they don't call it a severely. They they call it a living skills class. They say, oh, you know, we're thinking about putting your child in a living skills class. And you're thinking, oh, okay. But then I found out through you that that's actually a severely disabled class.
That's exactly right. It's basically what it amounts to. There just simply isn't any substitute for for learning the essentials. And that's who you are, who they are, who your kid is, and the law. You got to learn those four things. And I'm lazy, and I'm old, and I don't believe in making anybody work any harder than they have to. I try to avoid working whenever I can. But if you want to avoid working, you do the work to learn those things. Because then this way, when you walk in the IEP meeting, you know, you don't have the clangs. Your, you know, your adrenal glands aren't pumping away because you know what you're doing and you understand what's happening. And you find out, you know, if you tell them no, they're not going to get to beat you with a rubber hose. So this is, you know, this is the kind of stuff that you need to learn. And they don't want you to know that. And most of all, they don't believe it themselves. They really think that you're an inferior form of life.
Yeah.
You know.
And our child is too.
It was sixty years ago, and you know, it still is. And 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 then that's, and they resented furiously. I had a guy, I was in Hammond, and they had this, like, the kid doesn't, the mom doesn't speak any English. They didn't have anything for her in Spanish. So I made us think about that. And then they had the English language psychoed there, and they weren't handing it out. They didn't want to hand it out until they want to talk about it. So I says, you have it right here in the room. You need to provide it now. And the principal comes back and says to me, no, you're being demanding, and I don't like your attitude. With a with a tape writing. And I says, I'm demanding it because we're entitled, and you're violating the law. You need to cough it up. Somebody wanted to argue with me for three or four minutes about the whole thing, and then they finally coughed it up. Anyway, we just filed for a due process hearing.
You know, that's what makes me crazy as an educator because I see parents in IEPs.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, and I have to just say that parents that can't speak English, that don't speak English, they get nothing.
Boy, do they rip them off.
They get discriminated against big time.
Nothing, and they just make them sign, and they sign. And I'm, and you know, I'm just sitting there, and I don't, you know, what can I do? What can I say? And 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 it's disgusting. And I've seen, I've been in the business twenty years of education, and I'm seeing twenty years of parents not knowing their rights and and not getting anything for their children, and their children are going through the system with nothing.
Yes. And that's, that's the numbers game. That's the numbers game.
It is true. In San Diego yesterday, they tried, they're supposedly limiting the IEP minutes to a max of two hours. And I was helping a mom, and the meeting was done. It was five minutes for the meeting to be done. The mom told them, we're not, we're not signing the IEP. I told her, you're not signing anything?
Yeah.
And the minute she said that, they kept on extending and extending and extending. It started at 1:30. It went all the way to four o'clock.
Wow.
Signed the IEP.
Good.
Told her, and they record, and we recorded. They were upset because we were recording. And it, they told her that she had fifteen days to give him a response.
To what?
That's it, true.
They were like, okay, I'm like, you chose by law.
Did you show me the statute or the regulation that says that I only have fifteen days?
My comment was, she says, in fifteen days, if you don't sign, it's going to lock a go. Oh, that is the law. Thanks for letting us know. We'll make sure to get to you before that.
No, stay put, goes into, the last signed IEP remains in place. She could not sign it for six months. Last signed IEP remains in place unless they take her to hearing.
Right. They can file for a hearing, and they do have to do it eventually because otherwise they get into trouble under IRVLA USD where they didn't file, and so they denied FAP because they didn't file. So they have that problem. But, okay, so.
Peter, they haven't filed with me already for a year. I'm waiting. We're waiting because I'm not going to file.
Well, you know, you might not do badly to file because you have to look at things and figure. You might not do badly, though, because they've denied FAP by not filing. They got to poop or get off the pot, and they didn't do either one. And so you could probably, you know, you know, you could even throw in a compliance complaint, but then CDE will laugh you off, probably. But then, you know, you can certainly file. And one of your issues is that they said that this offer of theirs is FAP, and they never filed to prove it.
They haven't filed. They refuse to give us.
Attorney, though, right?
Yeah, I have an attorney, and they refuse to give us a three-hour meeting so Dr. Perlman and Dr. Hein can present their findings. They say they can't. Patricia Cromer.
Oh, okay. I know the name. I don't know her, though.
Yeah, I don't either.
She's really good, very expensive, but she's worth it to me. But now with you, I'm going to learn more, so I don't have to spend so much money.
Yeah.
Well, we do need to learn from each other and stuff. Not always happens.
Yes, that's right. Absolutely.
I even, I even learned good stuff from the school district lawyers. You know, I cite cases and everything like that that I learned from like people like Jack Park. I mean, you know, I get a lot of free education. You can get it, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Nobody, nobody can afford to pay for it, you know, if you can do it, get it for free.
Yeah.
Yeah. So who who has a question about what we've been discussing? I see a lot of new names on tonight. Does anyone have a question? Or want to talk about their experience with distance learning? What happened with your child?
In my case, I'm very lucky because my daughter goes to a non-public. So from the get-go, she's getting all her education. All the IEP is followed to the dot. They provide absolutely everything, all kinds of supports. I'm very blessed. If she wasn't the district, I'm sure they will, she would not, we wouldn't be where she is right now. We probably would regret and all of that, but she's not regretting. She's doing amazingly. She's having a little more anxiety because of the change in routine, but academically, she's still the same, not going backwards.
Good.
How old is she?
Thirteen.
Thirteen? Has she always gone private?
And since 2014, we went into non-public. Because, of course, it did something, due process, all that fun stuff.
Is the district paying for it?
Yeah, we stay put.
Yes. Yes. So what, what is the name of your non-public again, Barbara?
The Winston, the Winston School in Del Mar.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
Because there are very few NPSs that are any good at all.
Yeah.
Most of them are horrible. Most of them are horrible.
Exactly, exactly.
My experience, I gotta say, in this school is amazing.
Yeah.
They, they do, there's not, there's not that little box, they only work this way. They'll do whatever they can to make sure the kid learns. It's not one way. It also has to be ABA based or RDI, RDI or this or that. They'll do whatever it takes to help the child succeed.
Right, that's awesome. Yeah, Portview is also really good. But that's in the inland empire and Orange County area. Um, they're, they're excellent, but there's not very many good NPAs asses. Not very many at all.
And it's high school, with high school diploma too. There's, you know, she will go to actually prepare them for a four-year college.
Good.
Straight from there, AP classes and all that, so.
Very nice. That's wonderful. Yeah, that's when you know they're a good school if she's gonna go to college. She's, she's making educational benefit. Yeah, she's not getting, you know, just slid through, not learning, slid through, slid through, slid through every year. And without, without learning, so, which is what they do to a lot of the kids. And then when they, you know, test them and find out, oh, look, your child's five years behind in, in reading and language arts. We're gonna put him in a severely handicapped class and take away the diploma.
Yeah.
That all the time.
Yeah, and the diploma is not what counts. What counts is that they should actually learn something and they'd rather dump them somewhere and not teach them than to actually find out what their learning disabilities are and see what can be done about it.
Absolutely.
A lot of times it's not very hard to fix if it's visual processing problems or sensory stuff or auditory stuff. Those things aren't very expensive to fix and they're not all that difficult to fix in the hands of somebody that knows what they're doing. And if you take care of those things and the kid's not tormented all the time. They keep talking about how this kid has an anxiety disorder and everything. Most of the time, the kid is anxious because they're sane. In the situation that they're in, if they were not anxious, they'd be crazy. So they don't need to be treated for anxiety. They need to have the very sound and solid reasons they have for being anxious fixed. I mean, here they are, they're surrounded by idiots and they don't see any way that they're gonna get a break and they shouldn't be anxious.
I know.
I know. To me, I mean, but they told me a year, last year on June, does that she didn't qualify for special education? Even though she's a non-public, she qualified for absolutely nothing.
Autism.
Yeah, she has autism, but she is high functioning.
Right, but she's in a non-public school and for, since two thousand and fourteen and now she doesn't qualify?
Yeah.
It says she didn't qualify for what?
Nothing.
For, for special ed.
For special education. She didn't qualify for absolutely anything.
At the last try, that's what they told her.
We start all the IEEs, all of a sudden, oh, now that we find out with, I've been asking for years that, and you know, and a visual assessment and auditory process. And now we're like, oh, guess what? We did find out she, she does auditory closure problem. And we did find out that she, she has visual things. And maybe that's why she's having all this anxiety that I've been for since two thousand and fourteen. I've been asking, but I never had a good attorney like the one I have now and now.
Well, you know, somebody's talking to you and you can't quite understand what they're saying. And if you don't understand what they're saying, you're not gonna be able to answer their questions or perform successfully in school. And you're not supposed to be anxious when that happens.
Do you think it's too, do you think it's too young to ask for a evaluation in that area? Cause my son actually, Barbara and I are good friends and my son is a lot like her daughter, but he's only six years old. But I'm, I'm beginning to think he has the same issue. Is he too young to get tested in that area?
No, they say, they'll, they'll try to say it. They'll say seven and some of them even have the audacity to say eight. Six is perfectly okay to check for central auditory processing disorder. You might not be able to nail down a diagnosis, but you don't need to nail down a diagnosis. You need to find out what's going on, what's wrong with the kid so you can do something about it.
Yeah.
Corey stuff needs to be looked at. And Asha talks about that on their site, that it's just not okay to wait for two or three years before you look at things if there's evidence of trouble. And so yes, go ahead and look. I see kids that you can't assess them. You can't do an auditory processing assessment on them because they just don't have the required marbles to be able to follow instructions and everything. That does happen. But a reasonably intelligent kid at six years old, you can be able to get a lot of information about the kid. And the visual stuff, you definitely need to check and that could be checked a lot younger with good success.
Because it's also the earlier intervention window. So you want to assess in all areas to get, to catch him in the early intervention window, which is the best. You don't want to wait till later.
Right.
Yeah, you go two, three years and not taking care of things. Here's a kid with a, a, a visual processing problem. He's in kindergarten, the, the print is big, pictures are there. It's not really a hassle yet. So you go ahead, you wait for two or three years and screw around and make excuses not to do anything. The kid has found and had two or three years to fail and find out what an idiot he is. And so now he's got mood disorders and all sorts of other problems that you wouldn't have had if you took care of business when you should have.
Yeah.
Right, okay, okay.
That's where I am too, in regards to that.
Yes. And, and that's just another one of their delay tactics. If they can talk parents into waiting, then that just delays the process and saves them some money while you're waiting.
Yeah, see that melanoma, let's wait a while.
No. Get down.
Valerie, do you know the good visual auditory?
Oh, yeah.
I want to get a good visual auditory processing assessment.
People, where are you?
I'm in Corona.
Corona Norco.
Doug Stephy's the best. They hate him.
Yeah, he's for the kid.
Doug Stephy?
Stephy, S T E P H Y.
Yeah, I have it.
It's about thirty miles from Corona.
And he's spoken at a lot of board meetings.
Oh, good, really?
Yeah, he's for the kid.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. That, that, that's the tricky thing too about when you ask for an IEE. You never want to go with who they want you to go with because you're gonna know that person's in their pocket and has a, you know, financial relationship with them to just to do tons of assessments and make lots of money. And then go along with their agenda. And their assessment's gonna look just like the, the school district assessment. It's not gonna have any recommendations and it's not gonna recommend any services. So you always have to get, you know, talk to an advocate, get a referral, know who you to ask for. And don't just, because otherwise it's just gonna be a waste of your IEE and you're not gonna get anything out of it.
Yeah, listen carefully to the lady. It is really true because when you get an IE, it's your assessment. And when they screw you over, what are you gonna do? You disagree with them? It's hard to do. Sometimes it's not impossible, but the district, you can say this sucks. But if it's, this is my IE and it sucks, that's hard to say. So if you've gotten yourself a bad IE, you've really gotten screwed, but good. So you be really careful who you get. You have to look. I mean, you don't just drive down the road and say, okay, you know, I like that guy's sign. I believe I'll get my car fixed by that. By that guy, I don't need to look any further. Well, you know, I can see has a license from the Board of Automotive Repair must be okay. You don't say that. You look around, you ask questions. You make sure whoever fixes your car, they're honest, they're good, they're pretty cheap if possible. And if it's, that's the way you do with your car, you believe that's the way you do with your kid.
Right.
Very important.
The one thing here in San Diego, they're very good at telling the parents, well, you need to use it once in the list. Because if you use anyone who's not in the list, you have to pay the difference.
Well, okay, then they can go to here and improve that. They don't get to just say that.
I was like, oh, really? Well, well, here it is. I need the last three years of due process, mediations and resolutions. I want a public record request and I want for the last three years because I want to make sure it's true. And of course I get it and I see how much they pay for all these kiddos and all these due process, all the mediations and all the resolutions. And it's not true.
Here's a good, here's a good Public Records Act request that'll take you far is you, you get a, you put in a Public Records Act to the SLP or whoever it is. And in San Diego, they got their own for any, any contracts with a particular kind of assessor. So you know, whether it's an audiologist or a speech and language or whatever, you ask for those contracts. And you'll discover many times that the master contracts that they actually form with these people are far above their cap. And so now when they say, oh, this is your, you know, dog, this is your cap. You come back and say, well, if it's your cap, then how come it is that you made a contract with Susan Hollis for twenty-eight hundred bucks? When you say your cap is fifteen hundred, right? So it, it's hard for them if, if they know that their master contract is gonna go in your evidence binder and show what their cap really means or just squat. Their cap is what they use to tell you, you can't have who you want.
Right.
It doesn't have any reality most of the time.
Yeah. I'm learning, believe me. Excuse me.
Valerie?
Yes.
I just wanted to jump in and just ask a question regarding when school does open back up, you know, for the little kiddos that can't wear masks. Are they saying that masks are a must? Uh, to, I mean, I'm, I'm still unclear because I, I see that CDC, yes, masks. So what about like our special ed kiddo?
They're not going to open up until, they're not even gonna talk about opening up until four weeks after the first day of school. They're, they're gonna start talking about it.
Oh, so what does the law say about like making them wear, like, okay, my kid?
Every kid will be required to wear, well, I can't say that because now that's gonna be, you know, sometime at the end of September when they're, when they're, they might open up, they might not, they might, I don't think they will. I don't think they're gonna open up till after Christmas and, and after we come back. And at that time, it's just gonna have to be what the CDC is saying. If, if, if they take, if no one else has to wear masks, then they won't have to wear masks when they go back to school. But if they.
If the kid has a problem that he can't wear a mask because of his disability, then you know, that's gonna get litigated. So, so it's gonna have to, it, it's gonna be difficult to resolve. I'm not too excited about it right now because as Valerie's saying, I have no clue and neither does anybody else when they're really gonna open the schools and what's gonna happen. I mean, here we go, we've got over a thousand people a day dying of this in this country. And you know, and they laugh it off. You do the arithmetic, that's an annual rate of three hundred and sixty-five thousand people, which is a lot of corpses. So that's the rate that we're at right now. And in a lot of places, it's getting worse. And then you have these idiots that, the, the, the figure, they've got some kind of a right to all get together and you know, without masks and, and stuff. Like it's, they're losing their liberty if they don't get to infect other people. And, and so who knows, who knows what's gonna happen in this country?
Oh, my gosh.
It's gonna be an interesting autumn.
Yeah, so, but I hear what you're saying, Holly. You're saying that your, your, your sons can't do it.
Yes.
But you know, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. Because right now, they're, they're saying schools are gonna be closed until at least four weeks after the, the first day of the new school year. They're not planning on opening. That's what I announced at the beginning of our town hall. I don't know if you heard that.
After.
Oh. Do you came on after?
A little bit after, yeah. And then.
Okay, so yeah, I announced that, that I have, I have, that was my breaking news. I have the CNUSD announcement that just came out.
Okay.
And they're saying they're not opening. This is, this is the, you know, this is the answer. We have it right now. They are not opening at the new school year. They're not opening for summer and they're not opening at the beginning of the new school year. And it says four weeks after the, the new school year, they're gonna start talking about planning for reopening. So what does that tell you, Peter? It's probably gonna be the first quarter is not gonna be open.
No.
I don't think so.
We're out for the whole fall. Let's, you know, it'll happen in the spring.
Yeah, so I, I, I don't think that we can't even hope for until after Christmas break.
Wow, that helps us.
So, yeah, that was my, my breaking news announcement. And you know, they haven't even announced this yet. So I'm kind of like, the, I'm, I'm, I'm a leaker. I'm leaking it.
I have a question about the distance learning.
Yes.
Um, well, one of my questions was, is that during this distance learning, the speech teacher kept saying, first of all, they didn't do services right away because they had to figure everything out. And then when they did start doing services, she used the excuse of having to build a rapport again. And then once that was built, I kept asking her, when are you gonna service my child sixty minutes? And she told me she has over fifty kids to service, so it's hard. So she only serviced him for thirty minutes. I don't want that to continue when we come back to school.
Of course not. So that's what I was talking about. So you know, I know we're, we're gonna have a relationship now, so.
Yeah.
Teach you how to make sure that doesn't happen.
Okay.
Because, and this is, this is my whole point of, of this membership for parents. If you don't know how to make sure those things aren't gonna happen for your child, believe me, they are going to happen for your child. Because they're not going to make it any better. Because they're just not going to. It's gonna be just the same as it was last year. But if you implement your rights, you know what to say, you know how to ask for it and you know what to do. You, you can get an equitable distance learning plan, but not unless you learn these things.
Also that he has SAI, but it's, it's, it's different with him because he has it during a steam rotation that he goes to because he often, you know, doesn't handle losing games well and has attacked a few kids. Well, the special education teacher kept sending me these stupid projects to do with him. And I'm like, what does this have to do with, with what he needs to be learning? Shouldn't you be online doing social stories with him or something?
Yeah.
But you know, she didn't do nothing either. So that's another thing that I need to address because it's not gonna continue where she's gonna send me links to do these stupid projects, marble run games or whatever crap. That has nothing to do with what he needs help with.
I know. And because that's enrichment opportunities. It was, so, so you lost all that academic instruction from the teacher and you lost all your services. So they owe that to you. They owe it back.
You know, and, and the thing is, is you have to ask for it now. You, you know, you can, the district, I mean, I don't know what district you're, but Corona School District is open. And you have to ask for those services now and you have to complain about your distance learning. Because if you don't do that when we start, you're gonna be right back where you were. So you need to educate yourself and, and you need to know what to do before you start in August.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
And I, I've, I've joined the brigade, Valerie's Brigade, Parent Brigade, and she's got me ready to go. So when I start with distance learning in August, I'm gonna be ready. And they're gonna be, they're gonna know exactly what I'm looking for. And if we don't get it, then that's where we're gonna start with the compliance complaint or wherever direction we need to go.
Okay.
And this is what all parents are gonna have to do. Otherwise, your child is not gonna receive an education next year.
Right.
Yep. So this is where the rubber meets the road, parents. We can't just slide by anymore. You have to make peace with understanding. I have to learn how to be a parent advocate now. Otherwise, your child is not going to receive an education. This is the gravity of this situation.
You know what? I mean, well, I think we all want to, but they're, they're so scary. I mean, they hired, they texted PIs to follow you. They look into your websites, your, your own personal, you know, like Facebook or Instagram. And they're, they're such bullies that, that, you know, a lot of people just like, just don't have the backbone to.
Well, exactly. They're, they are bullies, but let's just keep in mind that they're, they're like the Wizard of Oz. Push back, there isn't any there there. You know, here's, here's a really important thing just in general about thinking. And I, and I really want it to lodge between your ears and displace any dookie might have got in, in there. And this is how it is. When you look, you look at the Newport cigarette commercial, right? I like to talk about that because you look at the Newport cigarette commercial and you learn from that that if you just smoke Newport cigarettes, you're gonna be rich and white and young and in the best of health and pretty and sitting in a boat in Newport Harbor. Not because there's any rigorous, you know, explanation of how it might be true. But you just sort of look at the commercial and the pictures and this is the stuff that they insinuate into your head while you're not thinking, right? And the cure for that is to take a look at it and say, now, wait a minute. How exactly is smoking the cigarette gonna make all these things come to pass? And in fact, there's no good answer to that question because he won't. Now, they do the same thing to you in the school districts. They talk in this authoritative way. They call themselves Doctor So-and-so. They don't let you forget that you're sitting in their room and their conference room or stuff like that. So they make you feel like you're sitting in their office, which is true. And that you're eight years old and sitting in the principal's office and waiting for them to do whatever they want to do to you, which is not true. They make you lose track of the high order digit in your age. You're 38 years old and you're sitting there and they make you feel like you're eight.
It's a mind game.
This is the kind of bullshit that goes on and it's easy for them to do that because they really think that that's true. They really think that you're in your form of life. So it's very easy for them to play that game because they're doing what they think is true. There is no substitute for being rigorous in your thinking. When they intimidate you and stuff and they give you these vague things that you're supposed to be afraid of. You simply have to be rigorous in your thinking and say, now, what exactly they going to do to me? Are they in fact going to educate me with a nightstick? Are they going to beat me with a rubber hose? And if so, how many times did they get to hit me? What exactly can they do to me?
Yeah.
And, and you find out and you discover in most cases, there's not a whole lot they can do to you. And they have their own vulnerabilities because it's three things that really matter to school districts. And the first thing is administrative convenience. And they'll do anything for the sake of administrative convenience, including pissing away a lot of taxpayer money.
Yeah.
Second thing is their budget. And the third thing is their public relations. If you can grab them on, on those three things, then they will be putty in your hands. And you make it clear, basically advocacy really comes down to this. It comes down to, if you do the right thing for the kid, then I'm going to make you glad that you did. I'm going to be administratively convenient. I'm going to cooperate with you. I'm going to figure out ways to save you your money so that you don't get hurt any worse than you do taking care of the kid. And I'm going to let you look good doing it. Now, if you want to harm the kid, if you want to bust my chops, if you want to bully me, then you know what's going to happen. I'm going to be administratively inconvenient. I'm going to run up your tab and I'm going to humiliate you in public. So what do you want asshole? That's basically what advocacy is. It's what they say on the street these days. No, if no justice, no peace. And that's what they need to hear.
Yeah.
And that's just the way it is.
And parents have all the power. We have the power. I D A is a very strong law. But they, they violate it every day, millions of times a day.
Well, and so do people in traffic. People roll stop signs, people run red lights. That's the way traffic is. And it's the same thing. You can't resent that. It simply isn't true that it's a law that, you know, one, one of the only laws out there that people have to enforce themselves. There's a lot of employment laws like that. The Civil Rights Act of 64 is like that. Title nine of the, uh, of, you know, the sex discrimination laws like that. And the nice thing about laws that you got to enforce is you can enforce them. You have a private right of action, something like FERPA that doesn't have, you don't have a private right of action. You ask the Family Policy Compliance Office over at U S S to do something about it. And six months later, you hear from them and then two years later, maybe they do something. So that's a problem if you can't enforce it yourself. This, a law that you can't enforce yourself is a law that has to be enforced by some agency. And if, and once it has to be enforced by some agency, babe, you are in some trouble.
I have another question, if you guys have the time to answer. Is it true that they, for example, this is a scenario, my daughter was in a school bus there from the district. She was in a bus accident. No one called me, no one told me, I found out because they put a piece of paper in her backpack. Of course, I went A.
What?
H I T, you know. It, excuse my language.
Right.
Now we require, we had a meeting, da, 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 da. And they say media, of course, a priority notice. And when we had the meeting, they told me that they could not provide to her private transportation, which was what I was requesting. Because they couldn't do that because of the, um, oh my God, the, oh my God, the, what is it that the union?
What does the union have to do with private transportation? That's.
Exactly. That's when you put in a Public Records Act request for the union contract.
So that I need to do that. And I, every year.
Put in a public, right. Okay. The union contract says that. This is a Public Records Act request. Give me the, give me, you know, show me the union contract. You're entitled to see it.
I have, I have kids that go to pub, uh, non-public schools, get picked up in, in private, um, transportation all the time. So they're full of it.
In San Diego, they do not. I've been asking for since 2014 for private transportation.
Well, that's because you're asking. In the police academy, and since your, your role is cop, listen to it. The police academy is right. First you ask them, sir, could you please get out of the car? Then you tell them, sir, you need to get out of the car. And then you make them. And sir gets helped out of the car. That's the, that's the environment in which we live. So you keep asking, you keep nagging and nagging is valuable. A lot of times they just don't want to hear your nagging mouth anymore. So I'm not at all against nagging. But when it gets to the point when they figure this baby is going to do nothing but nag, and I can listen to the traffic noise and that's fine. Once they get to that point, the more you nag them, the more you confirm them in their, in their determination not to do it. And then it looks like they're tough. They're not tough. All it means is that they're convinced that you're going to do nothing more than ask. You're never going to go to the.
It's a waiting game. They wait, they're testing parents. They test you.
Exactly.
Let's see what she's going to do. Was she going to do anything or is she going to let us keep saying no? That's their game.
That's all that it is. And, and of course, you know, it's what the proverb says, the wicked puts on a bold face. Just because they're talking boldly doesn't mean anything.
Yeah.
It just means that they figure that you're going to go away if they do. And if you raise the thing to a higher level, then you know, things change a lot of times. But you just have to be ready to do that. And the bad news I got for you is that once they realize that you're not going to take it to the next level, at that point, you're lost.
That's it. Yep.
This accident happened a while ago, but I mean, I, now with everything happening, I'm trying to see if I want private transportation. I don't want my daughter in their buses. I have these bus drivers. I mean, I have video of bus drivers using the phone when they're driving the kiddos. I, but bus drivers listen to inappropriate radio stations. Bus drivers. Gursing because someone cut them off. It's just.
Oh, yeah. I, I would never put my kid on the bus either.
Not only that, the, uh, in San Diego, there's only, for such a huge district, there's only two buses with air conditioner.
Now, that's a, that's a big problem when the weather's really hot.
What about the kids that have seizures when it gets hot?
And there's only two buses. Drive, well, the parents have to figure it out.
Well, what the parent, the way the parents figure it out is that that's a violation, the kid has a disability. It's a violation of section 504 and the A D A. And in California, the UNRWA Civil Rights Act, don't forget, you can't drag UNRWA into the federal court. Because they have 11th Amendment immunity in a federal court, but you certainly can in the state court and you can where it's more in small claims. Uh, UNRWA is a very nice statute that way. So you ask them, well, what do you want to do? Are you going to take care of my kid or are we going to litigate this? Because it's not an idea situation. The kid has a disability that puts him in some severe danger there. And, and so they have to, uh, accommodate his disability and make sure that the bus isn't too hot.
Yes. Well, isn't your attorney addressing all of these things?
It's just, I mean, I haven't brought this up right now because we were dealing with this whole state, um, what's it called? The state, state, the state put.
Yeah.
And I ease, but it's something that I'm going to bring up because I don't want to have transportation. This, I don't want to have to deal with transportation anymore. I just don't want to deal with them anymore. And they keep on telling me the.
I can pretty much guarantee you, I bet they're transporting some of those other kids to that non-public school.
Yes, they are. Yeah, but I don't want to be.
The first thing you do is free is you, you go ahead and you send them an email to the superintendent asking for the copy. You know, asking for your copy of the teacher contract, since they've talked about it. And then you'll have the teacher contract and you can read it. You can see what it says and it won't say anything like that, but then you'll know.
I mean, they used to want, at the beginning, and I, I mean, I've been fighting since 2016 with these people. And with 2014, at the beginning, back then, she was, oh my God, she was in second grade. And they used to pick her up at five in the morning and she didn't have to be in school until eight. So she was for two, yes. And in the afternoon, she would not come home until six. I was like, this is ridiculous. She's 13 hours. It is not okay for a, a second grader to spend 13 hours in a bus.
Right. And so I think that they're only allowed up to like an hour, an hour each way, something like that, or whatever it is. But in any case, they need, they're responsible to get the kid to school. And they can't say, we're going to take three hours to take this kid on a 15 or 20 minute ride to school. Uh, they're simply not allowing you to go. If they try to charge you with truancy or anything like that, well, then, okay, then they call you to a S R B. The first thing you do is you open the S R B to the public. And the second thing you do is you make sure that you have the state S R B handbook, which is a wonderful piece of documentation, which you then use. And then, of course, you record the S R B meeting and you invite the public and you just generally speaking parade the whole thing there. And you explain that the district is simply not willing to take your kid to school. Really? Your kid is supposed to get up and be on the bus at five o'clock to get to school at eight o'clock?
They, they use, yes, they did it. They, they tried that for three months and I was like, she started having self-injury behaviors, biting herself, pulling her hair. I was like, this is not.
You're torturing, you're torturing and abusing the kid and you're really going to get away with that? And I point out to them at that point, look, penal code 273A subsection B makes it a misdemeanor for somebody that has the custody of a minor child, that means you, to put them in a situation that is emotionally harmful.
Right, right. Yep.
And so you tell them, he's not truant. Uh, the kid's not truant and I'm not truant. The law says I can't send him under these circumstances. Provide for my kid to be able to get to school because that's your duty.
The other thing that happened too is for many years before I got this attorney, for many years I used to get the link of the manifest. And it had all the kids' names and all their disabilities and medical conditions. And I thought that was normal until I was like, is this okay? Because I'm not.
Oh, that's confidential.
I'm not okay with them having my daughter's medical conditions and her disabilities and.
That's a breach of confidentiality for all of those kids.
I got that for four years.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's unheard of. I've never heard of such a thing.
And then all the parents were okay with that, but I wasn't. And then of course, not all the parents turned on me because I, this was in another non-public, the non-public that she was. Before, before she moved to this one. Of course, the director was upset and everybody was upset at me because I made a big deal, but I was, to me was a big deal. I'm not okay with all that.
I was going to say, it's a big deal to you because it's a big deal.
Yeah.
That's why it's a big deal to you.
So everything that can go wrong with my district, I mean, there, everything that could done wrong to my kid, they, they done it. So that's why now I'm like, I'm done. I had to, I had to, I wanted to hire someone that was not from here. They was not part of the kumbaya posse from San Diego and I got someone from Reno.
And who is that person from Reno?
Patricia Cromer.
Oh, okay. Oh, she moved to Reno because I don't think she used to be there. I thought she was around the east parts. Okay.
She travels. She comes all over here, San Diego, because all of us. And I think you guys, I'm going to share your information. So you might be getting phone calls. And emails and all that good stuff because we need someone to really care for the kids and that. Then I, we don't need people that are kumbayaing. I mean, I understand that we need to have a relationship. But not under, not a relationship that you're taking my kid.
No, 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 no. We work for the parents and the child. We're on their side. There's no, yeah.
I had this attorney.
A good advocate that does that.
I have a mom who had an advocate and the, the, uh, one of the assessors did the I E E and she was very upset with the assessor. And the advocate let go of the mom because she told her, well, I can be your advocate because I don't want to mess up my relationship with the assessor.
That is so unethical.
Yes.
There's a lot of really bad advocates, a lot, a lot of them.
I mean, what is more important for you guys to be friends than you saying that you advocating for a child that that's when. It's hard to trust anyone in here. I, I don't.
Not an advocate. That's not an advocate for a child. It's not. And they shouldn't be taking parents' money to do that.
And mediation once administrator of law Judge Marion Tully said to me, trust is not in your nature. I mean, well, maybe it is in my nature, but if it is, it's been beaten out of me, you know, in certain, certain situations. No, trust is earned. And here's, here's something very important. They will gaslight you. They will guilt trip you for trusting them. Wait a minute. This is what I tell them. Forgiveness is free, but trust is earned. They're completely different. I, I have no problem with a little Tuesday. I don't have any disputes with him at all. I like the kid and everything else. Doesn't mean I'm going to hand him a glass of red wine, tell him to carry it over a white carpet. I don't trust Tuesday. It has nothing to do with, you know, it, it's not a matter of you hate somebody or you don't forgive him or something like that because you don't trust him. You don't trust them because they haven't earned it. That's the only way trust is received. Forgiveness you can only get for free. You can't earn it. But trust you can only earn. They're completely different things. And they will try to mix this stuff up in your mind in order to make you feel guilty because you don't trust them. Oh, we got to be collaborative. We got to trust each other and stuff. No, we don't. We'll, I'll trust you if you earn it. In the meantime, my job is to see what we can do without anybody trusting anybody. You don't trust me and that's perfectly okay.
I know with me, they were like, oh, you know that we care so much for your daughter. I go, I told.
Always say that.
I told her, please just don't insult my challenges. I got all the, I got the public record request and I know how, what you guys think of my daughter and myself. So just do me a favor, seven, don't give me your opinion, please.
Yes, they, they, I, I've been to over 3,000 I E P meetings in 22 years. And every single one, they'd say the exact same thing to the parent.
I want to play the Michael Johnson, the Michael Jackson tune is, is best and wisest. All I really want to say is they don't really care about us.
Well, you know, they, they kiss your ass at an I E P until you don't agree with them. Or what, you agree with what they're doing. And then it becomes contentious. And it's not only one person that's being contentious towards you, it's the whole team. And then you're sitting there and you are alone and they're all giving you dirty looks.
So you remember, you.
Rolling their eyes.
Yes.
That's fine. So you remember, you remember the Chinese proverb, but when a cat stands at the hole, 10,000 rats can't come out.
Well, they outnumber you. They were like, I mean, it was.
They do, but it's irrelevant. Doesn't matter if they outnumber you.
Stating tactics.
It was 17 of them and three of us.
Right. So.
Yeah. That's okay. That's fine.
I asked everyone, okay, what are your credentials? Where are your credentials? Where are credentials? And da, 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 da. And mostly people that were there, they didn't have the credentials to be there to begin with. Or even be part of the I E P.
Well, they can bring anybody they want to, just the same way you can. That's not a problem. But there it is. It doesn't matter how many they got there. And what's more, the more people they got there, the more opportunity is that somebody is going to step in something.
And they did.
And say something.
And it all lands on the table.
And they, that, that's an intimidation tactic that when they, when you walk in and there's 15 to 20 people sitting there. They know they're trying, you know, they're trying to intimidate you with that.
And you don't, and you don't worry about it. You don't worry about it at all. You count those people. 15 of them, here's 15 of them here to get a chance to open their mouth and fall in.
Yeah. When, when that happens, when I walk in and I go, oh gee, wow, this must be a really important I E P. Look at all these people here. Well, thanks for coming, guys. That's what I say.
My first time that after I got the attorney and we went to the I E P, I saw them and I'm not going to lie to you. I did had a panic attack because I was like, oh my God, what, what's going on here?
Yeah. It's a, they, it's an intimidation tactic.
And it only works if you're dumb enough to think that it makes any difference and you.
It doesn't make any difference.
You don't have to be that dumb. Here's a, here's another instance of what I'm talking about. Here it is. They want you to be worried about stuff and all. And it's your job to actually, you know, like the way you deal with the Newport cigarette commercials, the way you deal with this. You look at it and say, okay, they got 17 people here. What are those 17 people going to do to me? Here the recorder is running and, and picking up anything that anybody says. What are these 17 people actually doing and what going to do to me? They're not allowed to beat me with a rubber hose. They can't educate me with a nightstick. They can't shoot me. What are they going to do to me exactly? And the answer is they're not going to do anything. All they're going to do is try to gaslight you and bully you and everything else. And so what happens is, you know, you just remember that the, the dogs bark and the caravan moves on. I mean, you get there to take care of your kid. You don't have to worry about that. It doesn't, numbers doesn't matter.
Yeah. Also what they do here in San Diego is like, for example, I had the triennial last June. I did not agree with the offer of faith. Then they went back and changed it. They're going to offer her to go into the STARS program. And I still say I did not agree with offer of pace, but they keep, I, they keep on doing this. So the attorney keeps on coming and the fees keep on going up and up and up and up. We, we got the assess, the assessments now. They, they didn't have the annual last year. They didn't even bother to do the annual. Now this year, they just did the annual, but even they did the annual and they didn't even allow the Dr. Perlman and Dr. Heine to present their reports, but they created new goals, which I don't know why we're going to use.
Okay. They didn't consider the reports. That means they landed in this shit. You can take advantage of that. When they do the wrong thing, you don't whine about it and get mad.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Amendment of unrighteousness. You put it in your pocket and you buy something with it.
But I think they keep on doing that here. So because I mean, every time we have these meetings, the attorney comes.
Well, then that's the one thing you need to stop doing is bringing. Well, then, that's the one thing you need to stop doing is bringing the attorney. Attorneys have no business being at IP meetings, because attorneys don't get paid for coming to IP meetings, if they win or whatever. So that means somebody's gotta pay them, and that somebody's gonna be you. And so what happens is the district does, they, they keep making your attorney come to the meeting, and you keep ending up having to pay. And that is a bad situation, because you have limited money. If you have unlimited money, why are you going to IP meetings, right? So you have limited money, that's why you're even dealing with a public school system. So you got to plug those holes where they, they're causing money to leak out of your pocket.
Yeah, that's the same thing I asked, I said, what, why, what is your attorney doing, you know, and attorney, you know how they, they love to let the, let the districts keep making more mistakes, making more mistakes, making, so they can take it to hearing, but this is going way too long and causing her way too much money.
And the thing is, the district is gonna make more mistakes if your attorney isn't there. All your attorney is doing is encouraging them to be careful, you don't want them to be careful, you want them to be reckless. And the way that they're more likely to do that if your attorney's not there. Now, what you do to take care of the meeting and to guard yourself is you bring somebody that's a lot cheaper than an attorney. You bring a smartphone with a recorder on it.
And, you know, Peter, you, you educate yourself, you know.
That's right.
Yeah, so which I told Valerie, it took me, you know, I don't know how many years to realize I need to educate myself, I need to go in there with confidence and know what I'm talking about, and when they say something that's inappropriate or not, that's illegal, I need to be able to come back and stop that. And, and, and not sitting there frustrated, and, and, and I ask for something and it not get done, and it, and then when it does, it takes six to seven months before I even get what I want. All the violations. Year is already over. Yeah, I know. You know. My, my point is, I'm tired of it, I'm just tired of it, and I, and I, and I don't want to depend on anybody to really, I, I wanna, I wanna be the one to do it. I, I know my son best, yeah.
So there are skills you gotta learn, you, putting, you know, writing your compliance complaint is something you do need to know how to do. Writing a due process complaint, pursuing a due process case through the resolution session, through mediation, and even up to hearing if you have to. This is something that you need to learn how to do. Almost always, they will settle. Now, what happens is now you need to know how settlement agreements are done, if you don't know how to handle yourself with a settlement agreement, you're gonna get screwed out of things.
Well, some things that parents have to go to and get, get legal advice, or get an attorney or advocate. When it comes to a settlement agreement or, or hearing, then they gotta get advice. But the other things, they can develop the IP themselves, they can ask for IEEs, they can get good goals. So many things they can do to protect their rights, and, and they can do that, but they need to learn how, which is what I try to train parents. But I, it's so hard to get them to understand, you can do these things yourself, and, and to sit there and bitch and complain on social media, or, you know, and, and say, they're not doing this, they're not doing that, my district sucks, I hate their guts, well, it's your fault, because you're not doing anything about it, you're letting them do that to you. You have the power, and you can implement your rights, and then you can get what your child needs.
And if they do bad things, you, one thing you can do, and it doesn't work now, because the schools are closed, but one thing that I have certainly found very effective is you put a flyer together describing the shit which they're doing, and you hand it out in front of the school when people are coming and leaving, their kids are bringing them back. And, and if they've done something really outrageous and, and stuff, and they see that you're gonna be bringing, you're, you're gonna cause others that have been wrong to come out of the home, woodwork when you do that. And so that's a very inexpensive way to get their attention, oh, you don't like me doing that, well, why don't we sit down and work that?
Oh, yeah, I've wanted to go picket before in front of the district office and get all my parents in, let's go protest, because that's what they need.
Well, they do need that, they need to, they need to hear from you at board meetings, they need to hear at their C A T meeting, and they need to hear in front of the schools. There's not a lot of people at the district office, so it doesn't make much of an impact. But when you're there at a school.
The news comes up.
They might, yeah, if the news comes, that's great. If you're at a school, you know, someplace like Riverview Elementary, where that principal.
Okay, that'd be good, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, they don't like that, so.
Yeah.
Okay, well, you don't like how that's going down, you know, and I tell them, look.
I like it.
You, you stop screwing the kids over, and I'll stop talking about it, you, you have it for a deal.
Exactly. But it, it's like I was telling Valerie, you know, I've been to, going to IEPs for twenty years for other students, and what I see is just parents that are apologetic for having a child with a special need. And, and they're sorry, they're, they're, I'm sorry that you have to deal with my child, I've had parents tell me that, I'm sorry that, that my child is like that, you know, what do, what it, you know, you just, I, you know, whatever you guys want to do, let me just sign the paper, it, it, it doesn't matter, I'm just sorry that my child exists.
Okay, I'm sorry, I got appendicitis, and I gotta come to the emergency room, and I gotta get something done about it. I'm sorry about it, but you gotta do something about it, I know it's a pain in the ass, and I don't, you know, I don't have insurance, and you're gonna have to, you know, you're not gonna get paid, but you gotta do it anyway. Now, the taxpayers are giving them all kinds of money to do this, and, you know, they're not gonna have to hawk their houses or something like that to pay for your kid.
Yep.
They're gonna be okay, they're still gonna get paid, you, you check, you'll check them out, you find the sped has getting paid a hundred and fifty grand a year, plus.
Yes.
Plus Bennys and stuff like that, and you're supposed to be sorry, because I gotta take care of your kid?
Yeah.
And they do it for a lot less money.
But why do they act like it's coming out of their pocket?
Because they want you to feel like that, because they wanna gaslight you.
They're taught that, that to do that, they're taught to be gatekeepers, like, do you really want us to spend sixty thousand dollars a year on a private ABA program for your child and take away funding from other students? That they, this is, this is.
And I say, well, no, I say, well, I really don't want you to do that, I don't want you to spend any more money than you got of it, if you got it, you got it. And I'd rather you spend the money that way than to spend it on lawyers, and as long as you're spending it money on lawyers to ruin the lives of kids, my hand isn't gonna tremble.
One quick question, so if, if they, if, I, I want to understand this whole do, file, file due process, so if, if I file for due process, they're not gonna reimburse all the attorney fees, but if, do they, if they file due process, will they reimburse all the attorney fees, or how does that work? Because that's the part that I don't know, I don't understand.
Good, it's written, right, in title twenty, uh, U, USC fourteen fifteen, which is a procedural safeguards chapter, and basically, it's like this. If you win, then you are entitled to your fees and costs. If they win, they are not entitled to their fees and costs, it's like employment law or civil rights law, unless from an attorney, they're entitled to fees and costs if what they filed is frivolous. And frivolous doesn't mean without merit, frivolous means there isn't any way that if somebody believed that it was everything you're saying, that they could still find in your favor. That's what's frivolous. Now, if it's not frivolous, then it cannot possibly be, and I'm, this is the Ninth Circuit said this, it can't possibly be that you do it to harass or for improper purpose or something else, and that is the burden on parent, for parents, to get things out of parents, it has to be worse than frivolous, because a parent not being an attorney doesn't have any way to know whether it's frivolous or not. And this is what the Ninth Circuit said in R P V Prescott Unified School District, very nice decision, which was worth a read.
Yes.
And so you're quite safe as far as that's concerned. Now, you're not gonna get your fees if you lose. So what ordinarily happens, though, is you end up settling up, and then they end up just giving fees to the parent, to, to the attorney as part of the settlement. Now, here's where you have to be careful, and there's no substitute for this. You have to be careful, because a lot of attorneys, and the temptation to all attorneys is there, a lot of attorneys will figure they bully you into a kind of a crappy contract, so that they don't have to fight with the district, and they just can pocket their five or six thousand bucks. They will, that is a pressure on an attorney, to settle up easily without fighting in exchange for getting their fees at your expense. You just have to know that, that's why there isn't any substitute for knowing how to read a settlement agreement, and you don't sign something unless you know what it says, that's absolutely essential, you can't trust your attorney on that for the reason that I said. But also, I don't care who the attorney is, they're gonna overlook important things. I'm pretty good at looking at settlement agreements, I, you know, I vet things, because you don't have to know that much law, you just have to be like a programmer, you have to, you, you have to be obsessed with details, that's really all you need. And so, so I'm pretty good at it. I will look at it, I'll find all kinds of problems, I'll hand it to this parent that doesn't know a settlement agreement from, from an installment contract, right? I'll, I'll hand them this thing, and they'll find something important that I missed. I don't care who you are, you're never gonna see everything, you always, we'll have somebody else look at it.
Yes, absolutely.
Do we have to, for example, if we go to a resolution, do I have to sign it right then, or can I tell my attorney?
No, you may not sign it at all, what if they don't give you a deal that you're good for?
Yeah.
You're like asking me.
Want it, like it.
If I go to the car dealership and I look at a car, do I have to sign the contract to buy the car, well, no, maybe you don't want to buy the car at that price.
Well, boy, I'm asking because the first time my attorney pressured me to tell me, okay, go ahead, sign here, sign here, sign here. And then.
That's thoroughly unethical, no attorney ought to do that.
My first attorney made me sign it right then, I, I felt, I felt rushed, I was like, I felt, I was like.
You never sign anything if you're rushed.
Never.
You never sign anything if you don't understand what it is. Never, ever sign anything that you do not understand, you will get screwed if you do that. And if an attorney is shoving you and pushing you and not explaining things properly, that's an unethical person, and they need to leave the door.
I mean, this one is not doing, she's not doing, she's amazing, she explains everything, I mean, I'm very.
There you are, that's an ethical attorney.
But I just want to make, I know, I, I, since that's all I know, because that's what I went through before. I was, I want to understand if that's how it's supposed to be, or is it supposed to be that, well, let me take it home, let me look at it.
That's exactly right, attorney who does that kind of thing deserves a bar complaint. It's absolutely contradicting the rules of professional conduct, and they need a bar complaint for doing that.
Yep.
Because I'm.
It happens all the time.
Because I'm sure I don't want to, there are certain things that I'm not going to, I'm sure they're gonna try to do something to make me give up something that I'm not gonna give up, and it has nothing to do with my daughter's education, so I'm not sure they're gonna try to use.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You just simply can't leave things up to advocates, attorneys, OTs, psychologists, or anything, or physicians, you can't do that. You've got to educate yourself as far as possible, because if you want to find somebody that really cares about your kid, look around your house and see if you can find a mirror.
Thank you so much for, and I'm sorry for all these questions, but I'm in a roller coaster with all this stuff going on right now, well, it's been, it's been a year.
Well, and I think you just joined up for the brigade too, right?
For the hero one.
Yes, awesome, awesome.
Yes.
So, yeah, I'm getting these, I'm getting these parents educated, Peter.
I can see.
We're on our way. For next school year, right, guys?
Yes.
Okay, you guys, well, thanks, that was a great town hall meeting, and you, you know, you guys got the insider information, because no other parents know this stuff about the beginning of the school year, it hasn't been announced yet, so.
That's just.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, ta ta.
Okay, guys, have a good week, see you next Wednesday.